I'd like to call to order the July 31st, 2018, meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Friedman, Councilmember Dominguez, Mayor Protam Rouse, Councilmember Hart, Councilmember Sneddon, Councilmember Gutierrez, Mayor Murillo.
Here. Mr. Casey, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start our public comment with Denise Sanford, la Presidente of Old Spanish Days Fiesta's for this year, 2018. It looks like she has a gift for us. How nice, the this year's poster. So Ms. Sanford, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you for having us. And viva la fiesta to you and our community. My theme for this year is celebrate tradition. So this is one of our time-honored traditions of presenting our annual poster to the City Council with our flower girls in tow. So at this time, I would like to present the poster to you.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman, for receiving that beautiful.
Thank you. And if our flower girls would have, could have the honor of presenting you with some flowers, they would be really pleased to do that.
Yes, ma'am. There's a gate here.
Okay.
Thank you. Come on up. Come on in. Viva. And it was a pleasure to be at the Flower Girls Garden Party. Was that on Saturday?
Yes.
And we sure had a good time in the sunken gardens. I thank them for their service.
Thank you so much. And enjoy fiesta, everybody. Thank you so much.
We'll see you tomorrow morning. We'll be cutting the ribbons, so to speak.
Yes.
At the Mercado.
Yes, Dela Guerra Mercado. Both Mercados will open tomorrow, so we'll be out here. So I hope everybody can come and enjoy the Mercados and support all the nonprofits in our community, because that's our Old Spanish Days way of giving back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next up will be Sally Hamilton, and this is a time to celebrate a whole bunch of traditions. This group is our sister city group from Toba, Japan, and this is part of their student exchange program. And we're very pleased to be hosting them in the city of Santa Barbara.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, I am so proud to introduce you to the 25th Group of Student Ambassadors from, between on Santa Barbara and Toba, Japan. That means 100 students from Santa Barbara have been visiting in Japan and have hosted students from there. I want to introduce you each of these students as going to introduce themselves, but first, Alex Chao wants to tell you a little bit about what they've been doing.
Hi, my name is Alex Chao, and I'm 14 years old. I will be attending San Marcos High School in the, this fall. I'm actually a part of the Santa Barbara Youth Council, so I've actually been to many of the meetings in this room, so that's pretty cool. I've been hosting Tayo Kinoshita for the last couple of days. This experience has really opened my eyes to the culture around me. Hosting Tayo has given me the chance to show him a taste of American living and culture. Exposing students that are only in their teenage years to cultures and traditions from across the globe is an amazing opportunity. I've had the most fun in my life in these last couple of days. Although I don't speak Japanese, we are still able to have lots of fun together. Tayo is very funny, and he makes my whole family laugh so hard. I'm looking forward to the next couple of weeks in meeting Tayo's family in Japan. My ex-student Tayo would like to say a couple words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tayo Kinoshita. I'm 12 years old. I'm staying in Alex's house. Alex is quiet, friendly. First, it to speak suddenly that I are surprised to come to the United States. I'm very happy because I make the question popular in the United States. The family is paying regard wonderfully. I worried whether trouble is being caused by capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton, anyone else? Yes.
We want to introduce themselves.
Introduce themselves. Very good.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Cipriano. I'm 13 years old, and I'll be attending 8th grade in La Colina Junior High, and I'm hosting Nagira.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nagira Tsuji. I'm 14 years old.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Olivia Figlo. I'm 14 years old, and I am going into 9th grade at Santa Barbara Middle School next year, and I'm hosting Yuka.
My name is Yuka. I'm 15 years old.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Gregg, and I'm 15. I'm going to be a sophomore at Carpenter High School, and I'm hosting Aari.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Ariko Kokugo. I'm 15 years old. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all of you. And I just let you know that our 25th anniversary party will be August 10th. I hope someone will come from the city to represent us. I think it's Ms. Sneddon. And we will be Skyping with them, with just person to person, with people from the last 25 years.
Sounds lovely. Ms. Hamilton, thank you so much. You're all very welcome here. And then you have a trip planned to Toba next year. Is that right?
That's right. That's right. We're planning another tour that we'll go, and we'll be getting that out to the city to go visit Toba and then a few other places in Japan. It's a wonderful tour.
And all of us can go?
Absolutely. Anyone can go.
Save up our pennies to go to Japan?
Yes, yes. That's right.
No, it's not on me. Ms. Hamilton?
We love to have our mayors go. Almost all of our mayors have been to Toba. It's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you all. That closes the ceremonial items for today. We'll go to regular public comment, and this is our opportunity to hear from members of the public. And please know that we can't really get into a discussion with you because of our open-meeting laws, but we are happy to refer you to staff. Holly Pareja, our assistant, is with us today. She's got a flower in her hair, and you can make appointments with us or be referred to staff through Holly. So Caroline, you're first up on the stack, and Anna Marie Gott following you, Jose Arturo Gallegos. And that's it. You have two minutes, Caroline.
Members of the Santa Barbara City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. My name is Caroline, and I support President Trump because of his national security strategy. I would like to read part of an email from President Trump regarding our national security strategy. Economic security is national security. A strong economy protects the American people and sustains American power. We will rejuvenate the American economy for the benefit of American workers and companies. We will insist on fair and reciprocal economic relationships to address trade imbalances. We are committed to preserving our leadership in research and technology and to protecting our country from competitors who unfairly acquire our intellectual property. And we will embrace America's energy dominance, because unleashing abundant energy resources stimulates our economy. A thriving economy is essential to creating and maintaining a dominant and effective military, which is an integral part of our national security strategy. As well, a strong economy gives our diplomats the necessary leverage to be taken as a serious and respected international force for peaceful resolutions to conflict in other parts of the world. Please support President Trump because of his well-planned and comprehensive national security strategy, which protects the residents of every community in our country, so we are all able to live in safety and security. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you, and may each person listening have a good afternoon.
Thanks. Ms. Gott, come on up. You have two minutes.
Well, now that we've got something from our fake news participant for the City Council today, I'd like to talk to you about something that's actually real news and something that actually really affects the city of Santa Barbara. As you know, 501 East Mitchell Train, it was supposed to be up on appeal next week. It was canceled because of an error. It's going to be rescheduled. I've been looking into not only the videos of the actual decisions of ABR, but then to the ABR guidelines. I went to the ABR yesterday and asked them a simple question. What kind of training do you receive? Do you know that the new ABR members, for the most part, receive the ABR guidelines, and they are told to read them? That is their training. This is what one of the older ABR members said when he was commenting. He said, "We may go off the road," sometimes he was referring to in their decisions, "and that applying the guidelines may not actually come into play when they review projects." Is that what we're supposed to be doing? I don't think so. The ABR, the HLC, and any other reviewing body actually needs training. They need to understand how to apply the actual guidelines that the city has taken the time and the effort to actually create and lay down. They're not doing that. Let me read to you one thing about a compatibility finding that was made about 501 East Mitchell Train, which was totally wrong. The project meets the design guidelines as far as we know, because they didn't bother to look at them. It is consistent with the architectural character of the city. Well, they're not looking at the architectural characteristics of the city, but of a neighborhood.
Your time is up, Ms. Gott.
Please direct staff to train them. Thank you.
Okay. And I would ask all of our speakers to be respectful of other speakers in the room. Jose Arturo Gallegos, Natalia Govani, Mark Marshall Wolford, Michael Miranda. Okay. So you have eight minutes. If you need all of that, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'm going to be addressing about homeless issues here in our community, and I'm going to elaborate just a little bit on the no-sitting-lie ordinance on public sidewalks. And so I have some photos that Anna Marie Gott emailed me last night. She happened to be on the Gutierrez garden area by, there is Office Max Smart and Final. Some photos here. And also, there's some information on cities that ban feeding in the parks. So they're all there. Wait a minute, hang on. Don't want to give that away. Hang on. Oh, dear. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. We need no sitting-lie ordinance on public sidewalks citywide. This is not a civil rights issue. We need to think about those who work, have businesses, go to school, and pay city taxes. Should they be forced to tolerate erratic behavior from homeless individuals who are drug users and alcoholics? This is a health issue. That's, okay, one, two, and three. Three. This is a health issue ignoring or allowing the homeless to urinate or defecate in public places. It's dangerous, unhealthy, and is also distasteful and uncomfortable for residents and tourists alike to have, to confront these, this throughout the town. Hepatitis is a serious health problem for those who use drugs or are homeless, and it is dangerous for everyone to encounter, encounters them. Four, Casa Esperanza, now PATH, had a day center where homeless individuals were able to shower, get access to some social services, and able to get lunch. I think it was more problematic because there was a large population of homeless who were high on drugs, drunk or violent. We can't repeat same mistakes. Five, if a new day center is needed because a larger sit lie ordinance is passed, we need to ensure that A, trained social workers and caseworkers are available; B, veteran and health and mental health services are available; C, provider contracts and the services they offer are focused on getting people off the street and not services for an endless number of homeless from other places; D, security is highly visible onsite and offsite; E, providers cannot mistreat anyone who needs help, especially those who are senior citizens or have disabilities; F, that the city ensures adequate supervision and providers and that their actions are monitored carefully; and finally, everyone is treated with respect. And this has, this has been a problem in the past in Casa Esperanza and also currently with PATH. Many people who are clients, they, they get mistreated. They are not treated with respect. It's a pick and choose who they want. Now, I'm going to elaborate here a little bit on, on the parks. As you probably already know, Ortega Park, it was on Ed Hat. Somebody OD'd in the men's restroom at Ortega Park. I'm not sure if it was yesterday or before. Also, another situation, Tino de Gavetta, who is not president of the MCA, he was at the 76 gas station there on Mipasancas Street one day to get gas, and some homeless individual jumped in back of his truck. Now, I'm not sure if it was before he was getting his gas, during, or afterwards. So, you know, that's another issue that we're having down there in the lower Mipas corridor, you know, just unruly behavior. Okay. Okay. No feeding in parks. Once again, I am bringing up no feeding in the parks. One, as I have mentioned before, the main reason is a health issue concern. Two, bad erratic violent behavior by many of the homeless individuals and those who want to enjoy going to the parks, taking their children, walk their dogs, joggers, and so forth. They can't because of the bad behavior. Many women have been harassed by homeless individuals when they walk or jog in the parks, especially Alameda Park. And I have witnessed many confrontations and fights at Alameda Park that the police had to show up. This has got to stop. Over 70 cities, and one of those lists has 24 cities, and four of them are in the state of California. Something has to be done. And even in Malibu, the city of Malibu, there was a Methodist church for the longest time that they were feeding homeless people until finally the city just had enough because the people were enraged of the problems that the homeless people are urinating, defecating, drugs, the drinking, just destroying their community. I'm saying that many of these individuals, especially senior citizens and those with disabilities, who are crying for help. They need the help. They want the help, and they're not getting it. It's the drug, the drug users, the alcoholics, they're the ones who are getting preferential treatment, but it's a revolving door. With, with these nonprofit agencies and the advocates, what it is, it's, it's making money on failure, not, not on success. I have seen this. Like I have mentioned before, from the time that I was at the Victoria Hotel, when I moved in there, five individuals were evicted from that time that I had been there because of this bad behavior. You take them off the streets, you put them in residential situation, the behavior doesn't go away. Yeah. And we also, you know, I also asked the city, they need to coordinate with the county, especially with, with, you know, the serious mental health issues, is try to, try to work together on that as well. And one final say, if any of you, if any of you really want me to sit down and speak to you, to come up with, with answers, solutions, get in touch with me, and I'll be willing to work with each and every one of you on these issues because of my own personal experience in being homeless. I offer my help. Thank you.
We appreciate that. That will close public comment, and we'll go to the consent calendar. For item one, we need to have the new council people abstain from this. These were items that happened. You have a comment on that, Mr. Dominguez?
Actually, I just wanted to make a general comment. Maybe I can squeeze this in at the end of public.
Is it number one?
No, it's unrelated to the consent calendar.
We, at the end of the meeting, will have council member reports.
It was related to public comment. Just, it's very short. I just wanted to apologize. A few weeks ago, I made a string of words in a rhetorical fashion about regulation, and they were not taken as rhetorical, and that's my fault, so I want to apologize. What I should have focused on was gratitude towards the business community who's done voluntary and overwhelmingly decided to ditch certain products that are seen as not environmental, but I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay. Very good. We'll go back to the consent calendar. So number one, would you read that for us, please?
Item number one, subject, minutes.
Okay. And we have some minutes that we've prepared for approval before council members Gutierrez, Sneddon, and Friedman were on the council. Can I have a motion from one of the veterans? That was a motion by Rouse, a second by Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the three abstention? Okay. And then I know that Councilmember Gutierrez, for that same reason, he wasn't on the council when we did this item number three. So were you going to read number two as well? Okay. So go ahead and read your items, and then we'll recuse.
Item number two, subject, adoption of an ordinance for lease agreement with Channel Islands Marine and Wildlife Institute. Recommendation, that council adopt, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the waterfront director to execute a lease agreement with Channel Islands Marine and Wildlife Institute located at 301 West Cabrillo Boulevard, commencing upon the effective date of enabling ordinance. Item number three, subject, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the development plan for the 6210 to 6290 Hollister Avenue Automobile Dealership Project. Recommendation, that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the development plan for the 6210 to 6290 Hollister Avenue Automobile Dealership Project, making findings supporting the action, subject to conditions of approval and adoption of the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program.
Okay. Do any of the council members need to pull a consent item? Then can I have a motion for item three?
Please, approval of item three. Second.
That was a motion by Hart, a second by Rouse, and this is the one you'll need to abstain from. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with one abstention. And do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar?
Second.
That was Friedman Dominguez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're done with the consent calendar. And the next item is a report from our finance committee. Mr. Hart, what happened over there today?
Finance Committee met and discussed two items. One is a proposed revision to the facilities reserve policy. This change will allow more of the city's available funding to go directly into capital maintenance projects that will eliminate some of the deferred maintenance that the reserve policy is intended to address. So by revising the reserve policy, will create more revenue to the city's capital projects and at the same time providing a reasonable level of reserve funding to accommodate any kind of emergency repairs that might be necessary. So the finance committee discussed this item and unanimously recommended approval, and that will come back to the council on another date. We also received the June 30th, 2018 investment report and considered that and also recommended approval and forwarded that to council as well.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to the next item, which is number 16. Madam Clerk?
Item 16, subject, update of Southern California Edison's Wildlife Mitigation, Safety, and Grid Resilience Efforts.
Thanks. So Ms. Antle, are you all ready to?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. First of all, I'd like to correct that it's actually Southern California Edison's Wildfire Mitigation, Safety, and Grid Resiliency Efforts. We had a little bit of a spell-check typo on, on our agenda. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to introduce Rondi Guthrie and Bill Chu from Southern California Edison, who will be giving an update on the wildfire mitigation program that Southern California is taking up and also some of the noticing that they're going to be making throughout the county regarding this new program.
Ms. Guthrie, thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Rondi Guthrie, and I'm a Government Relations Manager with Southern California Edison. Thank you for inviting us here today to talk about our wildfire mitigation, safety, and grid resiliency initiatives. Many of you have now heard the words "public safety power shut off," or PSPS, where SCE will proactively shut off power as a last resort in high-fire areas. As a company who prides ourselves on keeping the lights on as often as we can, we take this issue very seriously and are working very closely with our local fire departments, emergency managers, law enforcement, on coordinating this process. We had a meeting in late June at the Office of Emergency Management, where all of your cities, all the cities in our service territory, were invited to talk about this process and get feedback on how we can work better. I know it's very important to this council how we outreach and notify your constituents, which are our customers, that we take, you know, very seriously as well. So you will hear from Bill Chu in just a minute, who's the Director of our Grid Resiliency and Public Safety on this topic, and hopefully will answer a lot of your questions and certainly look forward to hearing your feedback. I also just wanted to take the opportunity, I know many of you, you know, receive inquiries or questions or frustrations from your constituents on just the number of outages, and, oh my goodness, they're working again, or this outage maybe went a little longer than they said. And as, as many of you know, we are in the midst of a multi-year, multi-billion-dollar modernization and upgrade to our electrical system. That's to help meet a lot of our clean energy goals, that's to automate our system, and that's just to maintain a safe and reliable system. So we fully recognize the, the number of outages. We, we do our best to try to minimize what we call bundle, the outages that we do have, so we're not going back time and time again in the same area or the same pole or the same, you know, transformer. We try to bundle that work. We have a very metrics-based system that helps us identify, are we completing our outages on time? How many are we not completing on time? How many are going over? How many do we have to reschedule and why? So we pay very close attention to all of those issues when we're scheduling outages and, and aren't meeting the expectations of our customers. And on top of that, we are really bolstering our notification systems that will hopefully give a much more accurate estimated restoration time to our customers, so they can follow along with that. And the last issue that I know we've been hearing about, and poor Alelia has been taking a number of calls on, are the LED streetlights that have been recently installed throughout the city, and some of the residents' concerns with the spillover from those new lights. We all know we want the LED lights, it's, but they, they are different, and they are brighter, and where there's some challenges on some narrow streets or where these streetlights might be in more neighborhood areas, definitely see the concern for those folks where those lights are now coming over into their private space, into their yard. So we've been working with our contractor on getting some glare shields for a number of those calls that Alelia's been, been handling, and hope to have those here by next week and installed very shortly after that. So wanted to address a few of those issues upfront, although our main reason for being here is this presentation that Bill Chu will give. And then I also just wanted to... And then I also just wanted to let you know that Mike Diaz, our local planning supervisor, is here if we have any questions on some kind of local projects or anything going on. Also, my boss, Robert Quintero, in local public affairs, is here, and David Song with our corporate communications group. So, and so we'll take questions at the end.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chu, welcome.
Very good. Thank you, good afternoon. Rondi, thank you for that intro. Really appreciate this opportunity to speak in front of the, the council here. I think before I begin, I first just want to acknowledge some of the heart-wrenching tragedy that this community has endured last year and early part of the year, and this is one of the reasons that we take safety so seriously. And in fact, the fact that we set up this organization, which I now lead, has the name "public safety," and it speaks a lot to how important this is to Edison and it's to the community that we serve. So without further ado, I'll, I'll go through some of the prepared slides. I'm hoping this is, be more of an interactive dialogue that we have, and, and we definitely have some time for Q and A, hopefully to get some feedback and questions.
Do you want to do it, or do you want?
So before I get into some of the details of what we're doing, I think it's appropriate to help to set the context here, and I think this slide really speaks to some of the startling facts that we have. We used to speak in terms of the wildfire season, and that is really no longer the case. This is really an year-round situation for us, and I think all of us recognize that. And, and the charts here, it just demonstrates some of the most startling facts that we have. Eight of the 20 most destructive fire in the history of California happened since 2015, and what is most impactful of those eight, five of them happened in 2017. And it really just speaks to the, the, sort of the new normal, that stated new normal that we have in, in state of California. The Southern California Edison actually has been working actively to trying to mitigate some of these potential risks that we have, and, and for the longest time, we've, have taken a very active role. So maybe you'll speak a little bit about what are some of the things that we're doing, and then I can get into a bit more detail. And this slide talks about sort of the key areas. Operational practices, we're really examining how are we responding, how are we operating the system, and what changes could we introduce to, to more effectively mitigate the risk? We're looking to invest in system hardening, in the grid itself, so that the system, the, the infrastructure could withstand some of the, some of these sort of, whether it be natural or man-made catastrophe that's, that we're all faced with nowadays. And we're looking at exploring some of the engineering advances, new technology, new tools that are available for us, and also looking at our vegetation management practices. And beyond that, perhaps most importantly, having a robust situational awareness, so that we could be ready, have ability to better forecast, and have the ability to provide the community early notification in case there is impending weather events that we have. Just to provide some context, I think within the Southern California service area, I would say roughly a quarter of that is designated as high fire risk area, or high fire risk, high fire threat district, and that's per the definition by the Public Utility Commission, the new high fire map, that ruling that came out earlier this year. Beyond that, we actually also have a territory that we have previously designated high fire risk area. So we're treating this sort of essentially the same in terms of instituting operational practices, looking a way of better project some of the weather events in these areas so we can notify our customers. Okay, so this slide sort of talks a little bit about some of what we're doing in terms of hardening the system. I think maybe it'd be appropriate to take a step back. For the longest time, the electric grid has been designed with bare conductors, the stuff that you see overhead power lines, they're actually not insulated, and that's, have served the industry very, very well for many, many decades. So I talked about, a little bit about the stated new normal, and this is really causing our engineering team to take a very, sort of a, a different look at how we should be designing, constructing, operating, and maintaining the system forward. One of the things that we, as an industry, came to accept is that even though these are bare conductors, we understand that there will be situations where tree branches, or pond fronds, or foreign debris, or metallic balloons that will get into the line, and we accept the fact that there will be some arcs and sparks, but there is high-speed relay, protective relay, that will isolate the line very quickly. But going forward, what we wanted to do is, as much as possible, to eliminate these sources of arcs and sparks, which means that we need to actually insulate the overhead conductor from these type of foreign objects. So the picture on the upper left here, it's just to give you a comparison, in this, instead of traditional wood pole, we're looking at composite material that have the ability to withstand fire, and also looking at covering the bare conductor, what we call the cover conductor. In fact, sort of the lower middle of the picture, that's an example of one of our crew holding one of the, the tips of the cover conductor we are actually deploying now as we speak. The upper center picture is a picture of overhead transformers. Instead of traditional mineral oil insulated, as an insulating fluid, we're switching that to a insulating fluid, we call FR3, which has a much higher flammability rating, and so it doesn't contribute to the fire risk that we have. And to the right of, the upper right, is a picture of some of the fusing that we have, the fuses that are deployed on our distribution overhead system. One of the benefit of these type of fuses, it has much faster response characteristic, and the whole idea is trying to reduce the amount of energy that are transmitted to the location of fall, and as a result of that, reduce the potential of ignition from the power line. Similarly, on the lower left-hand corner, this comparison, just a picture of the arrestor. Traditionally, the surge arrestor has a characteristic that when it operates, it, it does emit some hot gases, and, and potentially that could be a source of ignition. These are newer type of technology, doesn't emit these type of hot gases. And then to the right, there's just a control box, probably that doesn't tell you a lot, but one of the things that we're doing is deploying what we call extra-sensitive settings on our relays, so to be able to respond, to detect these faults at a mass fast array, and also much more sensitive, and so that we can very quickly isolate these type of fault conditions that we have out there in the field. And this is all around trying to reduce the potential of ignition out there on our distribution line. This slide, I think, speaks to the, the scope and scale of the vegetation management activity that we have. There's roughly 900,000 trees that, that are in our inventory that we inspect each and every year, and we trim about 690,000 of those trees. Going forward, we're gonna need help from, from the community to take a more progressive role in terms of managing these vegetation, because we know with the years of drought, it really have created a devastating situation really for the state of California. And I, I know a lot of our constituents love their trees, so do we. For me, as an individual, I love trees, but I, sort of in relative comparison, I, I love my home more than, more than the trees. So the, these are important considerations, and I know we, we traditionally have gotten, getting a lot of pushback from the community when we want to trim the, back the line, so this is something that we could definitely look for some partnership and opportunity from the local leadership as well. I want to move on to the next slide. I talked a little bit about the, sort of the situational awareness. I think this is critically important. In, in the whole grand scheme of thing, I look at this as more of a defensive play, if you will. Having the ability to identify weather, emerging weather conditions, and that can help us to be better prepared, to ramp up resources to deal with potential events. And later on, we'll talk about the, the public safety power shut off, because this is a critical component to deciding which of the circuits that we need to exercise PSPS. And, and so right now, what we're doing is we're installing weather stations throughout our service territory. Obviously, we, you know, this is going to take some time for us to ramp up, but having these weather stations mounted on the circuit itself, on the poles, it will give us the ability to have localized temperature, humidity, wind speed, those are critical information that allow us to decide what is the risk exposure that we have in that particular pocket, if you will. So we're installing those informations, we have, building up the capability to ingest just large amount of weather resources, so we can do analytical analysis, so the, have a better prediction of what are the potential weather's condition that, that will be taking place. And the other things that we're doing with partnering with the UCSD, we're installing these high-definition cameras on mountain tops. Traditionally, when we notify there is, or Fire Suppression Agency, or notify there is a, a fire, they typically want to deploy some resources on site, so they can assess the scope and scale of the fire, and then they deploy the, the right type of resources. With this technology, having remote pantill zoom capability, as soon as there is water of a fire, these camera could zoom in and quickly assess the condition of the fire, and the Fire Suppression Agency could deploy the right type of asset right away, rather than having to wait till the delay having ground, ground resources. So these are some of the things that we're doing. We stood up a 24/7 situational awareness center as part of our emergency operations center in, in our location, watch office there, and, and this is now essentially being monitored continuously. So these are some of the things that we're doing. And then the other thing I think is critically important is that the, the customer base are also educated and aware of the risk, so they could be better prepared themselves on how to handle these type of situations. So we've launched a very active campaign throughout our service territory. Obviously, we're starting with the community that will be impacted by these type of situation. In fact, I think there is one that's going to be scheduled in, in Santa Barbara community coming up. I think it's August 15. So hopefully, the, the mailings and, and the invitation will be going out soon, if not already gone out. We have dedicated website on our company portal that provide information on all the things surrounding what we're doing, and, you know, being prepared for these type of new normal, and meeting with local agency, and such as this one at City Council presentation, and, and also holding workshop with our first responder community, emergencies, office, emergency services throughout all the service territory that we have, and, and also reaching out to media to help to get the word out. Okay, so this is probably the one that has a lot of interest for you guys, this public safety power shut off. I, I first must say that for us to be considering this, I think really speaks to the, to sort of the, the impact and the severity, the consequences. If you think about this, it's an electric company, we play ourselves in keeping the lights on, and, and this, this is really against every bit of our tradition and culture to think about turning power off to the customer. And this is really one, what we consider the mitigation at last resort. It's not something we take lightly, it's with lots of thorough consideration, only exercise these when there's no other means to protect the community, and it really is in the name of the public safety. And so we are taking a very thorough look at all the different factor that will contribute to criteria or events that will lead to these type of risk for us, and, and deciding on exercising that, these type of sort of mitigation at last resort. I, I think maybe it's more meaningful for me to sort of take events a little bit to the, to the slide that talks about sort of the timeline of how this type of events would happen. So earlier, I talked about having a robust situational awareness capability, and typically, say, in, in the range of, say, four to seven days out from an actual event, we'll have some indication, early indication of a potential likelihood of, of some kind of severe weather. But as time goes on, we'll have much better idea, because the weather do change, and typically around, I would say, 48 hours in advance of an actual event heading a particular local community, we'd like to be able to provide notification to the customer that there is a potential, that your power may be shut off due to the, the imminent risk that we're facing. And as part of this pre-notification, what we like to do is, even before we reach out to the masses, we like to give the local elected officials, such as yourself, preferably, preferably a two-hour advance notification, so in case your constituents come to you for question, you at least know that this is about to happen. Now, this does not mean that we will actually exercise the preemptive de-energization. This is just letting the customer know there is a possibility that would do so. Now, we will continue to monitor the weather throughout this whole period of time, up to point about a day ahead. So this is, you know, 24-hour in advance of the potential exercise of the PSPS, we will reinforce whether or not that will take place. If the weather condition has changed, we will provide that notification as well. So really, the customer will get two advance notifications, 48 hours in advance, 24 hours in advance, and, and then up to the point of actual shut off. At that point, we were really not in a position to give a customer heads up, we're about to turn out a few power. At that point, things are happening, there's lots of dynamic movements, and we will need to take whatever precaution we need to take to protect the community. I would, I must say that, that this is sort of our desire state. Depending on the actual weather conditions and the dynamic nature of that, in some cases, we may not be able to do so. If it's, we get a very fast weather movement coming in, that things are evolving very quickly, and our prediction are not able to pick those up, we may have to exercise those, but to the extent we can, we like to give these advance notice to the community. And the other thing, important thing is, after we turn off the power, we need to wait till the conditions that lead us to turn on the power subsides, before we could consider re-energizing the circuit. And the very important step in this process is that we need to patrol all the lines before we can actually energize. So if you think about this, why are we turning off the, the power during this period of time? This could be 12 hours, it could be 24 hours. The line sits there idle, you could have tree branches and palm fawn landing on these lines. The last thing we want is to re-energize this without clearing those debris, because that will immediately create another set of hazard for the public. So it's really important that we take the step to patrol and inspect the lines, and we definitely are exploring new technologies as, as we speak, to see what we could do to speed up this process of patrolling the line. Now, once we determine that the lines are safe to de-energize, we would turn, to, to energize the line, we would turn the, the power back on to the customer. So maybe I'll talk a little bit about how we internally are monitoring this, with what sort of organization do we set up to, to, to assess these type of conditions? Typically, if we know there is a severe weather condition coming up, maybe two to three days prior to that, we would have stood up what we call an incident management team at our emergency operations center. And as part of this team, we have a special task force, we call PSPS Task Force, that was focused on monitoring all the conditions out there in the field, understanding what the weather dynamics are like, and also deploy field forces, our troublemen that have the operational knowledge. One of the, the important factors is we wanted to have hands-on, real-time situation of what is actually evolving at the ground level, before we would actually take the step to de-energize the circuit. So you may be asking, so, you know, how often do you expect this to happen? Again, I, I think it's really important that we stress, this is a mitigation at last resort, this is not something we take very lightly. Based on history, and again, this is sort of giving you a range of how, how often this will likely happen, we probably see in the range of upper bounds of 10 or so throughout the year for all of our service area, and then maybe lower bounds could be, could be two events. So somewhere in this range, on the annual basis, we project this could happen. A lot of this depends on the actual weather conditions and, and all the stuff that I mentioned earlier. I think maybe I'd like to maybe open up for some questions, I'm sure you have some, and, and it'd be good to have some dialogue about this.
I'll start with a question. So when you, you say you, if you turn off the power, and then you need to patrol, was the words you used?
Yes.
The lines. So you need to look at them in person? You, you don't have a system by which you can tell something is hanging on there, or there's a tree? And would you use a drone? Is that what you mean by? Is that what you mean by technology?
Technology, yes. That is one of the things that we're exploring. Unfortunately, currently we do not have ability to fly beyond the visual line of sight and so that really doesn't do us much good. And so at this point, we're, we'll be relying on, uh, our troops, uh, our ground, uh, our crew to actually do conduct, uh, the visual patrol.
Okay. Um, I'll let, um, council member Gutierrez ask questions and then council member Sneddon.
Thank you for that presentation. That was, that was really well done. I have a couple of questions about the, um, the weather stations that, are they currently being used or are those proposed?
Yeah, so at, up to this point, we have, I would say roughly 40, four dozen or so that are installed. We'll continue to install these. I think in the coming months, we will have much more of these. Uh, our goal is to have a large number of these weather stations, uh, that will be installed in, in the near term so we could pull information back. Of those that are already installed, we actually are using those weather data. And in fact, those weather data are being ported to, uh, a public website that's available for customers to see as well.
Is that live? Like the, the public can view that live?
Yes, it's, it's live. It's Meso West and then later on, we, we could provide the actual web addresses if you like.
Thanks. And my second question would be, what would be the, the wind speed limit in which you would, you would start to notify the public of possible power outages?
Yeah, so we, we get that question a lot. Unfortunately, there isn't one specific wind speed criteria that applies uniformly throughout the tier, uh, our service, uh, territory, if you will. Really, I think there's three, three key things. Uh, it's the, um, wind speed, is the temperature, uh, humidity, if you will, and also the amount of vegetation that's nearby. So there's not just the wind speed along that makes the sort of the determining factor. Uh, I think typically, if, if you get wind speed upwards, you know, the, of the 30, 40 miles per hour plus, this is where we really need to pay very close attention. It doesn't mean that we will exercise PSPS at that point. So there's a lot of contributing factor that goes into that. Uh, the other thing I didn't really talk about is even prior to us recommending that we will exercise PSPS, there's a whole series of checklist that we established through our IMT process. Things like what is going on in the community, other evacuation activity that's taking place? What is our first responder telling us? There is fire suppression needs that we need to factor that into considerations. We would take that under advisement. But again, keep in mind, this is really about the, the general public safety. So there is a, there is absolutely no doubt about this. There is safety trade-off here. We're trying to look for really the, the lesser of the two evil. What is the, the worst condition we wanted to protect from? And that's really the, how we, how we go about making those decision. And so the IMT, uh, incident management team, the PSPS task force will make that recommendation and it will go all the way up to, uh, a fairly high-level officer of the company to eventually provide the blessing to, to exercise PSPS. Yeah, okay.
Ms. Guthrie?
Yeah, council member Gutierrez, I was just going to add on the, your wind question. Um, our business resiliency group and the meteorologists that we've, um, hired on, uh, has been working very closely with Rob Lewin at the, at the Office of Emergency Management on really understanding the sundowner winds in this area because it is different than the Santa Ana winds. It's different than, um, you know, other areas throughout our service territory. So Rob has definitely brought that, that matter to our attention and we're working very closely on really understanding the sundowner winds and how they impact this area in particular.
And when it comes to the, to the information that you'll make public, does that also include the video that you'll be surveilling?
Yeah, so actually the video, it's, it's also publicly available, uh, but the individual that go into the website, they will not have control of the camera. At least you could see it. Right now, we only have two locations. One is the South Orange County, Santiago Peak. The, the other one is Santa Inez, uh, further up. Uh, we're looking to explore, expand this coverage, uh, and this will take time because part of this is you can imagine having that technology and bring live video in requires a lot of telecommunication infrastructure. Yeah.
And just one more question. Will this affect cost for the, uh, customers?
Yeah, so, um, the part about the system hardening, that definitely will, uh, will, will have, has a cost component to it. Exactly how much? We haven't done those analysis. Uh, we're, we are making these preparations as we speak and we will be petition, petitioning this with the Public Utility Commission on the system hardening needs of our grid.
Thank you.
You're saying the rates will go up for your customers?
There will be an impact, uh, the, the investment. This is not, uh, this is, this is a sizable investment that we'll be making to harden, harden the system. I can't quantify exactly how much that will be. It, it, I think in the grand scheme of thing, it, it would be, um, uh, I, I, I rather not say, I, I'm not prepared to make that comment at this point.
Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. Um, so I, I think it's very exciting about the high-resolution weather stations and the high-def, um, fire monitoring. I think that's a real benefit to our community. Um, so just to say that right off, I have a few questions. First, is this the, the long-term plan? I mean, once the infrastructure's hardened, are we expected to have fewer outages then? Does the threshold of what type of wind event, does that change that?
Yes.
Are, are buried lines in consideration?
Very, very good question. Absolutely, that's our goal is, um, but keep in mind that we, you know, the, the area that we're talking about is, is very broad. It's roughly, uh, mentioned within the CPUC-defined risk area, it's about a quarter of our territory. If we're taking some of the other areas, that's about a third of our, uh, service territory. We are definitely keep, keeping costs, rate pressure on top of mind. So we're not just thinking about completely blitzing and, and covering all the conductors in these areas. Our engineering and, and the system, uh, engineering team is taking a very methodical approach to analyze where are the highest risk exposures and we're going to cover those areas first. Longer term, I would imagine that we reach the state where there'll be less and less circuits that will be impacted by the PSPS. That's our desire.
And, and then, thank you. And then, um, how does this affect the ability to actually fight a fire in progress? I mean, it, it is exactly that high wind event that makes a fire the hardest to fight and if it simultaneously were shut down and trying to fight that fire, is that a concern?
That's why it's, yeah, so the, good, good question. That's why it's really important that we have very close coordination with the fire suppression agencies. Uh, we're throughout this, these whole events, even leading up to the, the decision to exercise PSPS, there'll be lots of coordination with the fire agency and understanding the scope and scale. And, and in fact, uh, perhaps, uh, probably not well-known is occasionally the fire department actually would direct us to de-energize circuits or portions of the circuits. And that's taking place today, even without sort of the PSPS umbrella, if you will. Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then how, how big of an area? I know you're talking about your service area, but if an area is shut down, how, are we talking blocks, miles, square miles, whole city? What size are we talking about?
Yeah, so it's typically, uh, multiple circuits and, and so you could think of a circuit would say on the average, maybe, you know, a thousand, 2,000 customer per se. And again, this is system average. We have circuits that have, uh, multiple of that number of customers and we have circuits of much smaller in, in more sparsely populated area. But I think most cases, we're talking probably a cluster of circuits in a community that will be impacted. I, I can't really quantify its specific number per se, um, but it's not, definitely not few hundred. I, I would say it's more in, in the tens of thousands of customers that will be impacted.
And then I'm anticipating, um, my district is, is the Riviera District 4, the high fire, high hillside. I'm already pretty heavily impacted now by power outages and I'm sort of unpredictable multiple outages and already right now. So I am wondering, when you say 10 a year, is that eight in Santa Barbara, right in one area and then the other two somewhere else? Or is that really, sorry, 10 throughout the whole area?
So the, this, the, the analysis that lead to sort of this range of number, again, I, 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 I share that number, but I hope you, you take that in, in the context and not get pinpoint on, we're going to have 10 events per year. It could be two, it could be zero, it could be 10 and, and just depends on the weather conditions. And the analysis is based on historical, uh, number of red flag warning and that is one of the other criterias that we have. Is there a red flag warning event? And based on the type of historical red flag warning, uh, that we see, that's the possible range that we have.
And, and do you have a historical for Santa Barbara for this service area right here? How many we might've had in the last year?
I do not have those number. I, I imagine that's something that we could look into.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
So thank you for the, the presentation. And, um, the preparation that's going into this as we're changing, uh, the changing dynamic as we move forward with, with, uh, global warming and, and all the associated impacts, had, uh, kind of, uh, two questions. One focused on, uh, public outreach and the other, I'll continue on kind of where council member Sneddon was going. Um, when we're looking at a, at a region and your region goes all the way down into Los Angeles County, correct? So a lot of times is you're having a region-wide event or maybe even a statewide event, but if there's a, going to be a lot of outages, um, if you're, if you're going to have to do some outages, say down in LA and Ventura and here, you're, I would assume you'd have a lot of, take a lot of resources for that. So one is, um, getting into the question is, when you have to go back out and assess before you can turn the power back on and say you've had to do major shutdowns in say Los Angeles or Malibu, all the way up the coast, how do you allocate the resources for going out and, and prioritizing where you're going to? Because I mean, it's something that big. Do you anticipate having outages? Is that why we're Los Angeles up to Santa Barbara shut down?
Yeah. That, that's a very good question. And in fact, I would say even before we initiate the, sort of the de-energization, we would already be planning about how do we restore from that event? And I talked about the incident management team. The, the way we structure, once we stood at the incident management team, the IMT really has, uh, the command and control of the, all the company's resources. At that point, I would say it's essentially it's sort of all hands on deck. Do what we can to speed up the, the restoration process and that's our intent. We will be, the IMT will decide on what is the appropriate resource allocation throughout the territory because we don't want it to shift all of our resources to one area, then something happened to the area where they came from, then, then we left with no resources to deal with that situation. Yeah.
And then, and then following up on, on that, say you have a, with our weather here, a lot of the times we'll have an event where it's high, it's a red flag for multiple days and in the morning, it's fine, but then the, the sundowners pick up and they're here at a certain time of the day and then the next morning, you know, winds are calm again, but then we know they're going to pick up again. So being that's the case, would you anticipate having the power shut down that whole time? Or would you have it off during the wind events and then they, we have power during the following day? Or say we have, we're forecast for say three or four days of sundowners? Would we anticipate having no power for four days or would we be able to have power during the morning when there aren't as much wind?
Yeah, so I, I think, uh, what we like to, to do is as much as we can to provide power back to the customer and, and that, again, it's predicated on our ability to restore. Let's say if we have, uh, just hypothetically speaking, you know, a number of circuits are in a single-digit range that are impacted and if we know this is going to take us X number of hours to, to inspect, patrol before we can restore, but our intelligence tells us the next event's going to happen even before we finish the patrolling, then it doesn't make sense for us to de-energize, uh, to re-energize because the minute we re-energize, we have to de-energize again. And so we will definitely keep that in mind and have been very close coordination with the, the local jurisdictions, the, uh, first responder community and folks such as yourself to get a sense of what is the impact and what's going on in the community to make those decisions.
I, I think that's an important point to understand for you going forward because one of the concerns I, I would see is we're shutting it down during the high wind events. I, I think the public will get that, uh, for safety reasons, but then the winds die down, say the middle of the night and they're not here the next morning. The, the natural question is going to be, why don't I have power during the day at least? So, um, as you go through this planning process, really understanding that key, especially if we're forecast for a number of days, like three or four days in a row that that's going to happen, because what I'm hearing, there's a possibility that even though we might only have wind certain part of the day, we could be without power for multiple days because in order to re-energize, it might take longer than by the time. So just going forward, I think it's something you're going to need to work with, uh, emergency personnel to understand that and, and to do the proper outreach under why you wouldn't re-energize when the winds are calmer during the, typically the early mornings. Which gets into my next, um, couple of questions is just on how, um, what, what venues and what was you going to outreach to the public? Maybe you put it in there, but I, I don't, I want to know specifically how you're going to provide this information out. Is it through TV, radio, um, social media, next door apps? Just kind of a, how you plan to do that outreach?
So maybe I could start and then maybe Rondi could, could chime in. So we are, um, hitting all the community that will be potentially impacted by this through hosting, uh, community meetings and, and this is really done in partnership with the local first responder with a fire, uh, agency or the emergency, uh, operations services organization within the community. Uh, and then we're, uh, sending notification out to all the customers. We call this dear neighbor letters and this, we, we do that on a routine basis when there's construction activity and these specific set of letters that are starting to, to go out, uh, will have, uh, a lot of information to help the residents and the business to, to be better prepared themselves and like, very similar to why I share website information, things that you could do to help yourself prepare. So everybody that are, will be impacted will receive something in the mail. On top of that, we have hosting these community meetings and we're hoping, you know, folks to come in and working with our first responder in partnership with the local community, hoping to get the word out to the, to the folks. I don't know, Rondi, can you?
And what about during the, during the actual event? Like we, you know that you're going to likely shut down the power. What are you doing in those 48 hours beforehand to notify the public and how are you, because that, I think that's the key there is that the public knows that this is, this is going to be coming in. Do you have any strategies to reach out during those critical times before the power would be shut down?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're doing is even before the actual event, we're queuing up, getting ready, understanding what are the potential customer rasters. So I can't stress enough about making sure the customer are in contact with us and we're doing everything we can to make sure the cus, we have the most accurate contact information that the, so we can reach out to the customers. But beyond that, we're obviously going to be, you know, utilizing the, the local medias to help us get the word out. One thing that to keep in mind is we don't want to just blast us out through the news media because it could be just small fraction of the community is impacted. And if we just send this mass pub notification now, we could create some additional anxiety that's, uh, well, not necessary for the community. So this is an area that we, we'd love to get feedback from you guys and how, how do we do this more effectively?
Have you, um, have you coordinated about the potential use of reverse 911? Being that with the reverse 911, you can just target specific areas on there, on there and you can work with our personnel. And when, when we receive those notifications, sometimes they're area-specific, sometimes they're a more broad area. And with that, perhaps when, um, if there were potential events coming up that, uh, the sheriff would send that out, that you could have information included that would come out through that. So that information will be part of any updates that are sent out because I think reverse 911 is a, is a great tool to use. And I'm not sure right now because if you, do you have access to that or is that something that you've talked with anyone about?
We have, we actually have a lot of discussion internally, how to do this effectively. So I'll take note of this and provide this feedback to the team to make sure that factor that into consideration.
Yeah, and, and all great points, council member Friedman. And we, we have been working really closely with, um, our first responders and emergency personnel throughout the county and, and are definitely exploring all of those opportunities. We've provided, um, the GIS maps of every circuit that could potentially be impacted by PSPS. We've asked our cities and emergency managers, you know, overlay that on your community and let us know what, like you said, what's on that circuit? Is there an evacuation center? Is there a, a water pump, you know, that we must use to fight this fire? Is there a, a traffic signal that everybody, that would be the evacuation route out? You know, we're, we're asking our cities and our counties to provide that feedback to us. And on top of that, all of the notifications. And on top of that, all of the notification outlets that we can partner on. We understand it's our program, so we don't want to put that burden on our cities or counties if they don't want it, but I think most of you do want to work with us on that outreach to our combined, you know, constituents and customers. So, yes, whether it's the, you know, readySBC.org, you know, the county may decide to activate themselves if we go down this road of PSS, so we would obviously be very integrated with the county and our cities if that were to happen on all activities having to do with this.
Great, well, I just want to, again, thank you. I think it's an important discussion. Appreciate you being here and us understanding the trade-offs. I think you put it well, it's, we don't really want to do this, but what's the trade-off? We're going to lose something, but what do we gain from it? And that's an important distinction to have as we understand as we move forward, and thanks again.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, lately, we've been, over the last couple of years, talking a lot about our local grid reliability, and Edison's been putting a lot of work and effort, especially in the public outreach and education. And with that, we have kind of a roadmap or a plan of what Edison's plans are as far as within the city and our circuits here. And as I look at your system hardening options and things that you're doing, a few years back, Edison had planned for, we had planned together for a big El Nino event, which never really happened, but Edison brought a lot of assets up. We talked about our trunk lines, our back country capability. Is there a triage plan or a plan as you do your hardening work that says, we're going to be doing this country, part of the country first, this part of the circuits first going forward? That says, yeah, we're going to get those trunk lines secured first before we do other things? Is there something along those lines?
Yeah, absolutely. That's part of our prioritization criteria, and keep in mind that this is applied through all the high fire risk area that we have throughout all of Edison's territory. So, definitely.
Oh, California right now, right. And, well, because we also saw some, you know, there was a lot of photos published of footings and whatnot of towers that were a little scarier than they should have been, but we did, it did bring our attention to what goes on in the back country and about those assets and how remote some of those are, especially in our front country that you see, where you see the lines coming over. It's incredible you can get to them to work on them. So, those are the things that we'd be interested in, because I'm sure that's going to help prevent you having to do some of these things in a lot of cases, I would hope.
Yeah, I think as we, as time goes on, we, I'm hoping that we get invited back again to provide a little bit more detail about the specific plan that will be impacting the actual community. What investments, what are the hardening activities? But right now, we're still very early in this stage, and so we don't have any specific circuit numbers, circuit names that we could share, but I think in the foreseeable future, we will have that level of granularity.
Well, Rondi's kind of a celebrity here.
Yeah, Councilmember Rouse, we've talked a lot here about the Santa Barbara County Reliability Project, which is the upgrading of our transmission, our 66 KV transmission lines that serve this area. And that project is about 70% complete, and that will add more capacity to this area. It's definitely a resiliency measure for the company should the 220 lines go down for any, you know, natural disaster event. So, that project is on slate to be completed by the end of this year and is currently under construction.
Well, I will say, given the conditions and the circumstance, you guys did do an amazing job keeping the lights on as much as you did during our little January and December incidents.
Thank you.
In terms of peak capacity and whatnot, we, you had one time, we had the Peker plant out at Elwood. What is, or is there any future for that, or what's the plan for that going forward?
Yeah, so, right now, you may have heard we have what we call an RFO, Request for Offers, for the Moore Park subarea, so that's kind of western Ventura County and Galita resiliency. So, we put a request for offers out for folks to come forward with generation that we can use in this area. And specific to the kind of west Ventura County, there's a mandate from the PUC that we acquire, it's called local capacity requirements. You must obtain this much generation to supply your customers in this area. And without, and this is obviously due to the Puente Power Project being denied by the Public Utilities Commission as well as Elwood. We still have power that we need in this area, so how are we going to get that generation here? So, bids were just turned in, in earlier this month, so our procurement folks are in the process of reviewing those bids to see how we can get more renewable generation in this area to provide power.
Once again, that's tricky, renewable contractors that would not involve the Peker plant?
So, so part of the, because of the resiliency issues in Galita, and I will say that that is an objective, it's not a mandate for the company to obtain resources to meet the resiliency needs in Galita. However, we find it to be a responsibility that we meet those needs. We were open to gas solicitations in this area, so whether or not those bids were received, we're reviewing right now. I will say there was a very high preference that was slated in the RFO for what we call preferred resources, renewable energy. And in the Ventura County, the Moore Park subarea, we were not allowing at all for gas resources. It had to be all renewable resources submitted in that area.
But given the kind of capacity that the Peker plant could produce, it's not likely we'd be able to get something locally in that area that would produce that kind of megawatt, right?
They're reviewing the offers we received as we speak. And we recently held a community stakeholders meeting to update on that process and give a very high-level indicative overview of those offers that were received, and we will continue to keep our community stakeholders abreast of those offers and selections as we move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the efforts to reach out in the various channels, email, websites, having a call center, the more old-school way of getting information out to people or being ready to answer questions. I'm curious if you've translated some of the materials into Spanish?
Yeah, that's a good question. We're in the process of doing so, to have translations available. So, a lot of this will get posted on our website. We're also developing brochure that we could leave behind, and that is being worked as we speak.
And will your call center have multiple languages available?
Yes, that is currently our capabilities.
Regarding the team, who is going to be the leader of the team? And what will be their training and experience?
So, I think you're referring to the incident management team, the IMT team. Yeah, so, this is part of the overall structure, how we respond to emergency, and this is, we're very closely actually following the guideline, the National Incident Management System. So, this is the incident command system. The incident commander will be the guy that's in charge, or the gal that's in charge, and they will have gone through all the certification process of dealing with running a large-scale emergency response operation. One thing to note is, even though, and typically, the, our IMT incident commander are folks of fairly high level in the company, either director or principal manager level, that have many, many years of operational experience dealing with the type of events. And we have different type of teams that we will stand up, whether it be cybersecurity or heat storm or fire type of events. But the decision of whether or not to exercise PSS ultimately falls on our Vice President of Transmission System Operation individual, that is an officer of the company. So, that decision will get, the IMT will make that recommendation, and ultimately, the officer will make that decision.
And so, is the IMT leader already identified? Like, is there someone?
Yes.
Specifically for the Santa Barbara area?
So, it's not specifically for one geographical region, it's throughout the whole service territory. So, we have one uniform IMT throughout the whole area, if you will. If the situation gets really bad, we may have parallel team that gets stood up, with multiple IMT, each focusing on specific area. But typically, when that happens, the IMT is responsible for all the activity. The reason we do that is so that we, this team has total visibility to what's going on throughout and the available resources, and we'd be able to interact with direct sort of communication channel with all the agencies that we need to interact with.
So, who is the IMT leader now for, who would be responding in Santa Barbara?
So, we actually have sort of a standing roster of IMT team. They're on call, on duty 24/7, and each week, a new team comes in. So, we have, I think, seven team, if I, seven standing IMT team. I myself is a certified incident commander, and some of my peers are as well. And I, at this point, I think this week, if you're looking for a specific name, is that, yeah, so, one of my colleagues, Joe Goizeta, he's the incident commander on duty this week.
Okay. And have they done any response simulations yet in the Santa Barbara region?
We have many, many exercises that we run through as part of the annual sort of certification reinforcement process, and we will run through, if you call that simulation, it's an exercise that we will pull the team together and actually hand them a sort of a scenario that they will have to respond to. And so, that is done throughout the year as part of the readiness effort.
And have they done one up here in Santa Barbara?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thanks. Question, Ms. Sneddon? Do we have a public comment? I thought I saw Bonnie hand you a card, Ms. Raisin, rather. Question?
Yes, thank you. So, I just, I'm glad you mentioned the circuit overlay, and it brings to mind the critical infrastructure, and just off the top of my head, I'm thinking Lake Kachuma, the pumps there, Cottage Hospital, our D-SAL plant. If those have to run for four days at a time on generators, we're talking using non-renewables and it being expensive, just considerations of that, those all sound to me like they're on different circuits, and we might, might there be a situation where we have all of those down at once for four days? That's one question I have, just about the critical infrastructure that we have. And then just a suggestion that maybe aware and prepare might be a good way to notify people, because we really are trying to get people to get their emergency information from one place, and I don't know if reverse 911 works with mobile phones, and so many people don't have landlines anymore, so that might be a consideration. And then I think another question I have is, obviously, this is for our safety and that concern, and I just really like to ask, in the Thomas Fire, would this have prevented it? Would it have helped stop the spread of it? Or in what way will this impact us positively in terms of what we've just experienced?
Yeah, so, maybe I'll do this in reverse, the last one question first. Unfortunately, we're not able to comment on Thomas Fire and whether or not this would have either, you know, have any impact on it. As you probably may know, there are many litigations ongoing, so we're not able to make any comments about that. But to your question about the critical infrastructure, that is definitely something that we're very mindful of. We have identified what we consider essential services customers. So, those are the critical infrastructure, telecommunications, water pumps, hospitals type of situations. So, this is part of the reason why we're reaching out to make sure these communities or these entities are ready for these type of situations. You're right, if the situation gets really bad, that there is a prolonged period of outage, it behooves them to really understand what the potential impact will be and to be prepared, be prepared for those type of situation. Based on all indication we have, we don't anticipate this to be a very long drawn-out event. I'll give you a sort of reference point. Up to this point, CE has exercised PSS twice throughout our history. The one, the most recent one was last December in the community of Idlewild. That lasted about 33, 34 hours, I think, somewhere in that range. And that is the maximum outage duration. Some customer got picked up earlier, again, as I talked about earlier, as soon as their condition had subsided, we started the patrolling activity. So, some customer will get picked up, but using that as epoxy, that's probably sort of a, what to expect. Again, I'll caveat by saying that the weather would dictate the duration, but it's, we never know what the future holds, but sitting here, or sitting here, I don't foresee us having a PSS event lasting four or five days. That's probably a very unlikely outcome.
Okay, well, we can make comments now, and I've been taking notes and, you know, I've had a long relationship with Southern California Edison ever since I've been an adult paying my own bills. And, you know, I would hope that you would windproof your system and fireproof your system. I know people are wondering why you haven't done that yet, right? We've had sundowners and Santa Ana winds and fire threat for a long time, and I encourage you to do that. That way, you don't have to turn off the power when we have these emergencies. I encourage you to give as much notice as possible that an outage might happen, and then make the shortage as short as possible. And have robust communication during the outage. That's when people are worried and they're panicked, and you would need a strong relationship with our radio partners, and again, Spanish radio, so that everyone knows what's going on, when the power might come back on. And I would encourage you to work with our staff and our business community, Cottage Hospital, and then also, if it's possible, to create a program by which you give financial assistance to people who have medical devices and other needs, they have medical devices that they need power for. And Councilmember Sneddon mentioned a few critical items that we've come to rely on you. We rely on your power for critical uses and critical infrastructure. And yes, we would like regular updates on this. I get where you're coming from. You don't want to start fires because of your transmission lines. So, I think people are glad that you're looking ahead to some prevention, but if you could, as I said, make your transmission lines sturdy and not vulnerable to winds and other natural forces, we would be grateful to keep the power on, Mr. Chu. Okay? Are there any other comments? I don't see, Mr. Dominguez?
I just had a question for staff. So, you mentioned a few points about meeting with the city and county and getting information, I think, about critical infrastructure where the shut-offs would have the most impact. Have we given you a list? Is there anything we can do to support this effort?
Mr. Casey?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we have gotten their maps, we're doing that overlay process now, and we will be getting information back to them about our critical infrastructure.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and we'll close this item and look forward to more communication from you on your, all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, really appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. So, the next item is our council member committee assignment reports, and Ms. Sneddon, go ahead.
Thank you. I forgot to mention last week that I attended Dingle Sister Cities Annual Event with former Mayor Helene Schneider, and that was a lot of fun, and our poet laureates right now are in Dingle presenting poetry, and it's a great program, so I enjoyed that a lot. Also, attended the Recepción del Presidente with Mayor Mario also. Last night, I attended the drought, fire, flood Town Hall hosted by Congressman Carvajal, and it was very well-attended. They had to move to a larger venue, and I think there is a lot there in terms of resiliency and preparation that we need to be in communication with, which I'm sure we are, but it's good to keep the conversation going, that we're not out of that yet. And then tonight, I'll be at the library judging Harry Potter costumes, family-friendly event. It's Harry Potter's birthday today from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
What time is that? Is it too late for people to get their costumes ready and hurry?
Nope, people can get their costumes ready or just come and enjoy events from 7:00 to 9:00 at the downtown public library.
Okay, thanks for that announcement. Mr. Friedman?
Yesterday, I attended the groundbreaking for the Hope Gardens event, long with
Yesterday, I attended the groundbreaking for the Hope Gardens event, along with Mayor Mario, Councilmember Sneddon, and Hart. So great to move that senior housing project forward. It's a great location. And then I also met with the Vista de Mano retirement community and spoke with them, very engaged group of seniors, wanted to learn about the whole district elections and how that's changed, and then just city issues. And they were very engaged, and it was a fun meeting and talking with all of them.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez?
I also attended the Recepcion del Presidente for Fiesta and the Santa Barbara Area Association of Realtors, their Fiesta event. The library, our Santa Barbara Central Library, had a great volunteer fair on Saturday with numerous nonprofits who showed up to provide information about the services they provide and to recruit people who wanted to do community service and just help out. And I attended LEON, which is Latino elders organization network, or outreach network. And they also are a group of nonprofits that provide a lot of direct services to the community. And I attended the downtown Santa Barbara Public Safety Committee meeting.
Very good. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wednesday, I took a scenic tour of Vertiga's landfill with some of our council members and found it fascinating and some amazing technology going forward, but also realized the limits of it. Got to see the Falconer in action, which that was kind of fun. And then I attended the memorial service for a Don Hall of Famer, Eldon Ford, who passed away. And that was interesting to see some of old Santa Barbara turnout for that. He was a World War II vet who beat Pancho Gonzales on the tennis courts at one time back in his heyday. So cheers to Eldon Ford and family.
Thank you. Earlier today, there was a press conference put on by Old Spanish Days and the UCSB Economic Forecast, and they are gathering data related to the economic impact that Fiesta has on our region. So I encourage people to take the survey. It's only a couple of minutes, apparently. While you're out and about, we need to know about that economic impact. I attended the Greek Festival this weekend. Sometimes it gets lost in the Fiesta hoopla, but nice event, good food and dancing and the celebration of the Greek culture. On last Friday, homeless service providers gathered to discuss helping homeless people and other people out on the street, or people who are vulnerable during heat waves. And so that was a productive meeting. I'd like to thank our public libraries for acting as cooling centers last week. I think the heat wave wasn't as hot as we thought it would be, but still nice and warm and an air-conditioned place is a good place to be. Our Cities County Affordable Housing Task Force met last week, and it was a great discussion about creating a loan guarantee program so people can purchase homes in our area. And we've formed a subcommittee to look at and explore home ownership programs. The Trinity Episcopal Church sponsored a vigil to call for the end of the separation of undocumented families at the border, and they're continuing their vigil and their stand against that practice. I attended various Fiesta-related events. And then I'd like to acknowledge a former intern of mine sitting out in the audience, Mr. Steady. Good to see you. And we'll go ahead and close the meeting in honor of, is it Mr. Ford that passed? And we send condolences to his family, and we'll adjourn the meeting in his honor. Thank you.